Regional Planning Commission to be used to cover support for the planning department during January and February as needed. Then we'll have the Town Planner update in all the new business. And tonight, we're welcoming a new member, Brad Goodwin. Welcome. And we also want to thank Chris Bouchard, who served the Planning Board for several years and did an excellent job. We certainly appreciate his service. Okay, has everyone had the opportunity to review the minutes of November fifteenth? Any discussions, changes, concerns? The only thing I'd mention is we do add that Chris Bouchard was absent at that meeting. And then we'll have a motion that will approve with that change.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion, all in favor? Opposed? And one abstention, two abstentions, I guess. Okay, great. Very good. Jean, do you want to explain the first A and R?
Yes. Do you have a plan before you this evening from Peter and Lynn Zoukis? And it's for property at 381 New Boston Road and also Lane Eight. And the applicant or the plan shows the division of the property into four lots and parcel A. Parcel A is actually being conveyed to a neighbor, Curtis, and the plan is so noted. And the additional four lots that they're creating have the required frontage. So since the plan meets the requirements, I would recommend you endorse the plan as submitted.
Great, any questions from the board? If not, we'll have a motion then to authorize the clerk to endorse it.
Moved.
Second.
Second, all in favor? Very good.
The next plan you have in your packet is for Virgil and Kim Van Gerven. And you will see that they are dividing their land at 704 Main Street into lots 2A and 2B. Lot 2B has the appropriate notation that is not a building lot and is being combined with additional land of Van Gerven. And lot 2A has frontage on as shown on the plan. So since the plan meets the requirements, I would recommend the board endorse the plan submitted.
Very good, any questions or comments from the board? If not, most into...
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead, sure.
I'm just wondering where this location is.
It is heading towards the, you know where GNF Industries is?
Where what?
GNF Industries. And the boat ramp is across the street. It's actually on that old road right there, the frontage. So it kind of runs along the Army Corps property, along Long Pond.
Okay.
A lot of it is subject to flooding.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Great, okay. So the motion, we have a motion in a second to endorse the plan. All in favor?
I missed the motion in second one.
I think it was Dane.
I move.
Yeah. And while I second.
Thank you.
Okay.
And the final plan you have this evening is for Old Green Acres LLC. And this is for land on Breakneck Road. And this is dividing the land into three parcels, each of which meet the requirements. So I would recommend the board endorse the plan submitted.
Very good, any questions on this one?
Yeah, the location.
Sure.
Where would it be on Breakneck? Is it down at the end?
It is.
Travel Breakneck to get to that area?
Sort of near the end as you're heading toward like the old, the recycling area. And it's in the area where they've built a new house. Yeah, that area there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And the right hand side of the road too, as you go down.
Right.
I have a question too, Jean.
Sure, go ahead, Bob.
The three parcels are, there's parcel G, that's mostly wetland, is that, is that buildable lot?
Um, so it does meet the upland requirements. So I actually reached out to the surveyor and he calculated the upland and it is in excess of what is required. It will obviously still need to go through Conservation Commission and, you know, it may or may not meet all of their requirements. But technically, it meets the upland requirement. However, as we know, we can't really look at that when endorsing an A and R.
Very good.
So it's just really for informational purposes.
Very good, anything else? If not, then motion to endorse.
So moved.
Dane?
Second.
Second, Sue, all in favor? Very good. Okay, and you'll sign those afterwards? Great, so as I look up at 6:35, right in time for our public hearing. Do you want to read the notice?
In accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 11, the Planning Board will hold a public hea- hearing at the Sturbridge Center Office Building, 301 Main Street, Sturbridge, Mass. On Tuesday, December thirteenth, 2022, at 6:35. On the application of Recker LLC, 1660 West Over Road, Chickity, Mass. The applicant requests site plan approval in accordance with Article nineteen of the zoning bylaw to allow the construction of a new 7,000 square foot building for the purpose of Interstate Towing, Inc., auto towing and recovery business to locate at 698 Main Street, Route 20, Sturbridge, Mass. A copy of the site plan and application can be inspected on the Sturbridge Town website at www.sturbridge.gov backslash planning dashboard backslash pages backslash recent dash filings. Or arrangements can be made to view the application packet by contacting the Sturbridge Planning Department at 508-347-2508 or by email at jlyce@sturbridge.gov. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on this proposal should appear at the time and place designated. Members of the public may watch the meeting online via the Town's On-Demand Video Broadcast or via table, cable television on Channel 191. In the event of a ro- of a remote hybrid meeting, notice shall be posted on the Planning Board website. And those that wish to participate will find specific information on how to access the meeting on the website. Please note that the meeting, hearing, will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Admitted by Charlie Blanchard.
Very good, thank you very much. Jean, do you have any introduction on this?
Yes, I do. So the application before you this evening is for 7,000 square foot building and related site improvements at 698 Main Street. This again is very close to the, it's right next to the property that we just talked about on the A and R for 704 Main Street. And the proposal is for Interstate Towing to build and operate their facility there. The property is located in the general industrial zone. It does have wetlands on property and the applicant has made application to the Conservation Commission. That hearing has been continued until January fifth. It is not anticipated that any building layout or site improvements would change as a result of that hearing. The Design Review Committee has approved this project, the design of this, the architectural design on November fifteenth. The project has been submitted to staff for review and recommendations and no major concerns have been noted. John Chevlin was retained to conduct a peer review of both the traffic impact assessment and the stormwater management plans. And he has provided a report for you this evening. And as you can see, he is here now that he's found a place to park. So the project is something that's permitted as of right in this zoning district, subject to site plan approval. You have Dave Faes from CMG, Joe Cohen from Joe Cohen Landscaping, and I'm so sorry.
Sorry, A.J. Crane.
Oh, A.J. Crane, the builder and from McMahon Associates?
Shannon Gair.
Shannon Gair, to present the project to you. And we can answer any questions that you may have after their presentation.
Very good, go ahead. A.J., do you want to say?
Well, my name is David Faist, I'm the project civil engineer. Here tonight just to present, I'll go over the site plans and then followed by the traffic. And then also have A.J. Crane present some building information. And then Joe Cohen will present the landscape architecture. So to start with this property, the boat ramp is basically, this is at the far end of town. Over as you're heading towards Brimfield, this is right after the site is where the, you pull off to go and down to the boat ramp. The site's around eight, eight to nine acre, just under nine acres with a wetlands area that comes from the neighboring property highlighted in green that flows down to the wetlands on this property here. Our, we're only really developing this front little portion here, it's about an acre and a half or so. Part of the reason we found this property, just to give you a little background, Interstate Towing applied to another site in town, 154, over near where I guess would be Applebee's on that end of town. And that site was in the riverfront. As part of their alternatives analysis, they were asked to look at other properties that were available in town that weren't in the riverfront. This one was, and then it happened to be available for sale. So that's why they ended up putting an offer, purchasing sales, and they did buy this property. So they are the owner of it at this time in order to provide a, you know, basically an alternative to building in the riverfront area. So with that, we just have bordering vegetated wetlands. There's a small area of intermittent stream bank in this area here where there was an old cart path where there's a pipe here. But again, we're just developing this front corner. So as Jean mentioned, the site itself, fairly basic, Interstate total of a 7,000 square foot steel building and then a storage yard to store all the towed cars and vehicles that they have. Similar, they're located now where the old truck stop is on Route 20. They'll be relocating that business to the other side of town, to this property. We've located the curb cut as far away as we could from the intersection of the boat ramp, which also worked out, given the grade difference from the road to the site. This area worked out a little better so that we could also have a DOT compliant curb cut and, you know, make it up to grade where the yard area is going to be. The yard itself is just under an acre, it's about 30,000 square feet. We just roughly laid out, again, the number of cars here will vary, but not including the area for the truck turnaround, probably about 60 cars and three tractor trailers. And as you see at the other area, that'll be sort of a variety of different vehicles depending on, you know, the week or the month. Because they are constantly sort of rotated out of there as, as part of their business. The site will be fed totally fenced in with an eight-foot cedar wood fence around the whole perimeter. With the exception of this front area, we'll have a chain link fence with a sliding gate with a black slats in there, privacy slats to block the view with landscaping in front of it to sort of, you know, make it look a little nicer. In the front, there'll be an area for customer parking where basically people that come to pick up their cars after they've been towed can go into the office area and then access, you know, be let into the yard to find their vehicle. The other part of it, they'll have some employee parking within the fenced in area. The dumps will be located, again, out of sight, sort of behind the building. And they will also have, one of the interesting features just nowadays with the electric vehicles, they actually have an electric vehicle, a damaged electric vehicle storage area, which is basically made up of just a concrete block enclosure, just those big two-by-four blocks that be stacked up. So because they have to monitor, once they tow the cars, they have to be monitored at a fifteen or thirty minute intervals to make sure they're not, batteries aren't overheating, just as one of the dangers after they're in an accident. But that's all done in compliance with fire codes. And I know that that was all presented to the fire department and they provided, didn't have any additional comments on that information. If anybody has any questions on the layout, I'd be happy to answer, I can move on to the grading and drainage.
Sure, anyone on the board have any questions?
I have one question.
Dane, go ahead.
You were speaking about the electric vehicles. Is this building going to be served by public water? And where would the nearest water source be? I know electric vehicle battery fires take enormous amounts of water.
In this case, it will be serviced by, the water main is on the opposite side of the road. And we will be providing a sprinkler system for the building as well as, you know, public water and sewer. Turns out the sewer is a little interesting because there's a sewer force main from GNF Industries across the way. Comes by our site on our side of the road, it's a two-inch main. We've already, you know, talked to the DPW, we'll be allowed to tie into that force main. That still has to be designed. The water will have to trench across, we'll have to get the DOT permit for that. But the water connections will be on the opposite side of the road.
Okay, glad to hear, it's public. Do you know if there's going to be any site feature nearby to those concrete containers for a water source?
At this point, I don't know if they're required to do that by code. I know from the information that Jeremy has submitted, basically they do everything in compliance with their monitoring protocols. So I don't know.
If the fire department's happy, I'm happy.
Yeah, as far as I know they are.
Okay, thank you.
Very good, anyone else? Go ahead.
So moving on to the, just basically give you an overview of the grading and drainage as far as the site goes. It is considered a land use of high potential pollutant load because we'll be storing car, damaged cars as well as, you know, their towing trucks. Tow trucks themselves be stored inside the building most of the time with occasionally maybe one on the exterior. We've designed the site basically to have, as I explained, a five percent grade coming in. Then there's a short, like 10% grade to get up into the main yard. Main yard we've designed with a two percent to about a five percent slope up to the back. Given the grading on the site, there's actually a cut, so we have a two-to-one slope at the rear of the property. And actually, the wetlands in the area here is actually uphill of the site. The existing drainage all flows downhill towards Route 20. There's an existing catch basin located in the roadway here where all the existing drainage goes to. So our challenge was twofold, one to provide the requirements for the high potential pollutant load as well as also not increase runoff to the state highway. So to do that, we basically, there's also with our test pits, we had a ledge at the back of the property. It was a little more shallow, four to five feet depth. So there'll be a little bit of rock that might need to be hammered at the rear of the site. However, the front test pits we did, there used to be an old house and some other stuff in the front. We had depths of around eight feet or so in one of the test pits. So therefore, our drainage is all we placed up in the front of the property. We have a series of deep sump catch basins, which will go to an offline water, or oil-water separator for the, to treat the one-inch storm for all of the, any potential oil or other releases. In the larger storms, we have an underground drywell system, which will allow for underground recharge of the stormwater. And then they'll overflow to a shallow stormwater basin at the front of the site, which will have a retaining wall and then a small berm, which will be landscaped in order to try to help, you know, make it look a little nicer within, and I believe in the smaller storms, I think the one-inch as well as the two-year storm will mostly all be contained on site. So there won't be any runoff. But in the larger storms, we have provided a spillway that would discharge it to the same place it would go under the pre-development conditions. And with that, we're not increasing any of the off-site flow and we're providing the treatment that's required under the local stadium. So be happy to answer any questions.
John, is that something you reviewed, do you have any comments on that or?
Yeah, as part of our review, we review the site plans, also the stormwater report. We had a few rounds of comments, but I think when all was said and done, I think they have answered all the comments that we have had satisfactory. I know as far as the stormwater goes, they do have a lot of BMPs and water quality improvements in there between, you know, deep, deep sumps with hoods. They have the water quality structures, have the oil grid separator, they have the detention basin. So they do go ahead and take care of the water quality issues. As far as the flow going offsite, they are under what they're doing now during the peak flow rate. So I was satisfied with the stormwater design.
Very good, thank you. Anyone on the board have any questions or comments? Great.
Thanks, I'll turn it over to the traffic engineer, Shayna Gar.
Yeah.
Hi.
So basically, we were retained to do the traffic assessment for the proposed facility. We did a site visit, we checked site distance at the proposed driveway location. We collected traffic counts, we looked at the continuous five-year of crash data that's available from Mass DOT. We also looked at ITE, which is a publication that we use to determine expected traffic volumes with facilities. And it's based on a variety of different parameters, the type of facility, the number of employees, the square footage of the building. Based on our assessment, we don't expect any significant impacts to Main Street as far as safety or traffic.
Very good. John, I know you also reviewed this.
Yes, we did look at that. As far as the scope of work that they did, we felt it was adequate. There's not, it's not going to be a big trip generator. So they did do an analysis of just a proposed site. As mentioned, they did gather a lot of information as far as existing counts, looked at crash data, looked at site lines. As the state of the analysis shows, that the driveway will go ahead and operate satisfactorily. I think a level service C is the worst case as far as pulling out. We did have a note in regards to traffic. I think the police also had a note or fire in regards, trying to get some advanced signage as far as notifying drivers on Route 20 that there's a driveway cut for this type of use just to make them aware in regards to type of use there. So those are being installed, they may add to the plans. I think it's going to go to Mass DOT, just get confirmation on that. So I think it's going to work. The one area that I did have as far as traffic, or I guess traffic related, was just on the plan, it's just where the, I noticed the day we were out there, somebody came off before you got to, I think it's street or road, came off the gravel area, and I think it was noted too in somebody's comments that cars do park in that area. But I think Dave is going to work with Mass DOT as far as putting in signage or something in regards to try to go ahead and get that better clearly defined so people aren't coming off as soon as he passes driveway. But I think that, I think that could be addressed working with Mass DOT as far as what could be done.
Okay, good. Any questions from any members of the board on the traffic? Okay, thank you.
Good evening, I'm A.J. Crane, I was retained as a builder. A series of, okay. So. This is a street-facing side, so the short-facing side of the building will be facing the street. Small Interstate Towing sign, no different than this one here, which is, this is their existing facility in Chickity. I'll get to this and that, but essentially the same sign. Wood structure to soften the front, very similar to this, timber frame. But essentially, the entire building is exactly like they're building in Chickity, which is a vertical steel panel, brown. Guards out. And then, you know, white doors, but none of those will be on the street-facing side. Small storefront system here, very similar to this one that you see here. And the stove foam, faux stone, stove foam. Exactly the same as this, identical, they want to keep the same branding in Chickity. Same exact thing. And again, this is quite a distance from the street. And you'll be looking, what's the great difference between four levels? It's got to be here.
Probably eight to 10 feet, I believe.
Yeah, so you'll be eight or 10 feet lower than this building. So you'll be looking up through a nice retaining wall, through the landscape vegetation, and then into the building. So you'll be looking up at this structure from here. Again, small storefront system, another egress door here with a mini version of this. And then this is the rear-facing side, rear of the property. This faces the woods in the back for the boat ramp. And this faces the yard, three large doors, view windows, you know, pretty standard, almost identical to this side of this building here. Same exact trim package, white, it's actually called a snow color trim, brown gutter down spouts. It's literally the same exact building, about the same building, so.
Very nice.
Yep. And just for clarity's sake, this picture here, this is the gate that Dave was talking about, except for it would be jet black with the black, with the black privacy slats it went from.
Great.
Yep. Small, I'll show you. Kind of colored this in a little bit, but. They didn't talk about it, but there is good site lighting on the property. We did all the photo metrics and so nothing is all offsite, it's all dark sky compliant. Some wall packs on the building, some, a couple decorative fixtures in the front. Other than that, pretty basic, some pole lights around here to light the yard for safety overnight. In the front here, like Dave was saying, there's a general office waiting area, a couple of bathrooms, and the rest is really, is really just warehouse. They don't do any repairs or anything like that on site, it's really just the store of the trucks. So it's really in a nutshell, it's not really that complicated of a building. Does anybody have any questions about the structure itself, 7,000 square feet? It'll take a lot longer to build the site and the building, so.
What's that?
I've got one quick question.
Sure.
On the elevation with the three bay doors? There's no man door?
So. Main customer entry in the front, one, one.
The other, the other elevation with the three garage doors?
Sorry. So there's four total egress and none are required to be, there it is.
There you go.
Yeah, so no, there's two on this side and two on this side.
Gotcha, so you get your egress covered there?
Yes, absolutely.
I just figured people would want to get towards the yard, maybe without opening a 20-foot tall door.
Right, so I think what, what happens is all of their yard personnel park because their employee parking is right here. And there's a door right in this corner.
That answers my question.
Right.
There you go.
And I think what happens is the, because of the safety regulations, employees don't bring people through the shop. They go out onto the sidewalk through the gate.
Right.
Right, because they can't, people that have their cars towed can't go through the shop, so.
All right, very good.
That was it.
Any other questions from the board? And Designer View has already approved the?
Yes, they have.
So great, okay. Okay, very good, I guess next landscaping plan?
For the record, my name is Joe Cohen from Joseph Cohen Landscape Architecture. In putting together the landscape plan, the site has that unique uphill, you know, with the basin in the front with the wall on one side of the basin there. So what I did with the larger street trees was move them further back to cover this large pavement area, mostly just for the heat island effect that, you know, spelled out in the planning regulations. In front of the wall, I used kind of lower growing shrubs and get some color in there. But because we have overhead wires along the street and the grade rises sharply right there, there wasn't room to put street trees there. And also that would, you know, essentially block the view of passerbyers. So, you know, we kind of clustered to block some of the views outward, to screen the fence in the front here and then the larger trees around the side. Mostly all native species, similar to what grows there currently. And, you know, it'll be low maintenance, it'll look great. Any questions?
Anyone on the board have any, go ahead, sure. Do you have any?
I'm good. I was just going to ask, so on the approach from the street, do you have any kind of street view of it? Of any kind of elevation that would show heights of trees and how much of the building is seen versus not? Because it's a big building running back, so when you're coming into Sturbridge, I just was wondering with, how much coverage is from that angle?
Yeah, so coming in here, this is the sign, so that's all low perennials, ground cover shrub, so two feet or less. Coming up, you know, heading west into Brimfield, you know, we have a. Red butt tree right there, so native early flowering pink shrub there. So those get about 25 feet tall. And then with the elevation difference of roughly 10 to 12 feet, you know, you're essentially seeing half the building above that.
And on the west side, there's more trees on the other side of the building?
Yeah, so essentially just trying to block this view from the boat ramp area?
Right.
You know, screen that area. And then, you know, coming eastbound from Brimfield, you have a similar situation with.
Sort of what I was asking, yeah, so.
Yep, okay.
All set?
Yeah.
Great. Any other questions on landscaping?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next. Yeah, I'm sorry, anyone from the public has any comments or questions about this? Any concerns, issues?
Yeah, so we do have a concern, we live on 687 Main Street.
Sorry, you have to use the microphone and state your name for the record, thanks.
Hi, everyone, good evening. So my name is Angel Cologne, I live on 687 Main Street, Fixit, Sturbridge. So we do have concerns regarding this build, specifically because in front of where we live. We feel like there's going to be a lot more traffic and concerns when we're pulling into our driveway because of that. You know, what they're stating seems okay, right? Seems pretty straightforward, right? But for people who live there, like myself, it's going to be an eyesore for sure, seeing that across the street and seeing something that with lights, that I'm sure it's going to affect us. I understand there's a economy lodge in front of us as well, but it's fairly quiet, I'm sure. You guys are aware of that. And I know we have GNF down the street as well, but again, they're out of sight and we don't hear much from them. This will increase the foot traffic because they're towing cars. So we're seeing a lot more cars going into that area, a lot more people, a lot more movement. You know, our concerns are, you know, it's a 24/7 business, so it's going to be constant, no night noise. It's usually fairly quiet there at night, no traffic. What else? You know, they were stating, you know, that they have an area there for, you know, because they park cars, there to be oil, et cetera. But what they don't talk about is that it can also bring pests, right? And cars that are sitting there are going to bring more pests. And cars that are sitting there are gonna bring more pests, and I don't want to deal with that on my side of the road. So those are my concerns. I, I, I don't, I don't know if we have anything else that, that... Yeah, um, of course, I understand what they're trying to do, and I get it, but me living there, I'm sure if anyone of you guys live there, you'd be, I don't want to see that across the street from me. And that's all I'm saying is, you know, taking consideration of people that already live there, uh, on the other side of the street, that's a residential zone. And that's all I have.
Very good, thank you very much. Thank you. Anyone else have anything to, like to add? Okay, any, any other comments from the board?
Yeah, I'd like to add on to that. I thought those were great points and well said, thank you. Definitely the challenge when you have residential use up against an industrial use like this. To the point about the lights, I think clearly where the site's elevated, 10, 12 feet, I've heard a bunch of different numbers, but roughly. And then the pole height on top of that. We talked about full cutoff and dark sky compliant. How tall are these lights and can you speak to how they're oriented so we're not gonna have a lot of glare on the adjacent properties across the street?
So we did provide, I know A.J. provided a photometric plan. So basically, you know, to provide so there'd be no spillover of light, you know, beyond sort of the limit of work in the property line here. There'll be an eight-foot fence surrounding the property. Pole heights, I believe, are 15 feet for the pole lights surrounding, would be wall packs on the building.
Restriction.
The dark sky compliant fixtures. The only one that's near the road is I know the police department had a concern with the stretch of the road being very dark at night.
Right.
So one of the things we did add in was a pole light at the end of the driveway to light, you know, for those, to address the concerns of the police and fire. But again, we provided a compliant photometrics plan as part of the submittal. Be happy to try to hopefully address that. So with those types of fixtures beyond the property lines, hopefully it would, you know, minimize or make it so that, you know, it meets the regulations.
So those fixtures that we're seeing in the cut sheet there, are those LEDs or do you know halogen or?
Yeah, I believe they are, I don't know, A.J.?
Yes, they are.
My familiarity with LEDs is the heads themselves are directional. So it's not like the glow of a bulb that just emits out of that box, the little diodes point as you aim them. So whoever designed this lighting plan would have directionally aimed those not towards our residential neighbors, correct?
Correct.
The one near the street, I assume, is perpendicular to the flow of traffic. Do you know which way that points? Does that point eastwards or southwards or? Could that be directionally aimed to minimize the glare that might be seen by the residential?
It's, they're, they're hinged, right? So we would, in order to satisfy this photometric plan, which is per reg, sorry. Tinged, right? So in order to satisfy the regulation and the comments by the police and fire, we would, we would see the glare on the road and tilt down, down until they were satisfied, honestly. We, we don't want to create any issues for anyone near us or anything like that. It's not doing anybody any good shining anywhere other than where it's supposed to be. You're right, the bulb, the bulb is different, there's no reflectors or anything like that, those diodes are pointed and they don't wash beyond what it shows right here. There's a lot of zeros everywhere else but right here.
That answers all my questions about lights. One of the other questions was about traffic numbers. I know we talked about the numbers being suitable per I E T E, but what kind of quantities are we talking about here?
So during the weekday morning, we're only expecting about 15 vehicles, 10 entering and five exiting. And during the weekday afternoon, a total of 29 vehicles, almost split evenly, 14 entering and 15 exiting.
Is that per hour?
Uh, this is for the peak hour.
Okay. What, do they operate on the weekends too, when I'm at home?
Yes.
Yeah. Is it similar numbers for the weekend, do you think?
Um, we did not, I don't believe I T E had any numbers for Saturday, but that's something that we can look into.
Roughly, what kind of bypass traffic is there on this busy road? And what kind of comparison, like, are we increasing this by like 0.01% or something?
Um, so this isn't, this is really a destination, you know, it's not, people aren't just gonna drive by and, and kind of go.
Hey, while I'm there, I'll pick up my broken car.
Right, right. Um, but we do have daily or hourly traffic volumes, and I believe it's only about 500 vehicles on the roadway to, total?
As in, there's 500 vehicles on Route 20?
During the peak hour.
Okay. And then, there's like, what did you say, like a dozen?
Yes.
That'll be a destination for this?
Yes.
So I don't know, I'm not that good at math off the top of my head, but that seems like...
It's pretty minimal.
Okay.
I mean, 15 vehicles.
Out of curiosity, do you know if that includes customers? Is that all just customers, I assume? Or it's not like the big truck that brings in the broken car too, right?
Correct, so it's based on the square footage of the building?
Mm-hmm.
Is how these were calculated. So, I mean, it really would just be the trucks coming to drop off the tow and then customers coming to pick them up.
Gotcha. That answers my questions, thank you.
Yeah, I think I'd just like to add too, what they use for a chip generator from I T E, you use automobile car care center? Which I think those volumes, in my opinion, when I looked at, that's why I wasn't that concerned, I think are higher than what you would get from a towing facility.
For a car center, yeah, I completely agree with that, yeah.
So I think that's the closest thing that I T E had.
I was surprised by that peak hourly rate. I was like, we are getting a lot of broken cars in this community.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. So I, I was surprised those numbers, like, those, I mean, not surprised that that was, but I thought they were being very conservative in regards to the use they had, so that's why.
Yeah, yeah, yep. Thank you very much. And then I think your last point, sorry Charlie, was about pests. Is there an integrated pest management plan for this facility, do we know? Or could there be?
Um, I don't, I believe that that can be part of, if that's a condition of approval, I think that'd be acceptable to the owner. I know he's not here tonight, because I'm not as familiar with the towing business, but definitely that would be acceptable.
Okay. Great, thank you. Again, thank you for your comments, that's all I have, Charlie.
Very good, thank you, Dean. Anyone else have any comments, questions? We have a motion then to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor? Close, no one? Jean, you want to go through what the order of conditions would be?
Yes. So as I mentioned before, this project is permitted as of right, meaning it's zoned industrial and this is a permitted use. After review, we've determined that it has met all of the site plan criteria stated in the bylaw. I would recommend approval with the following conditions of approval. And these have been shared with the applicant and they have noted no concerns. One, all construction and site improvements shall be in conformance with the plans and specifications submitted and approved by the planning board. Two, all state and local zoning bylaws, building codes, and regulations must be adhered to. Three, all other necessary permits must be obtained prior to start of construction. Four, site shall be kept in neat and orderly condition throughout the construction process. Five, exterior construction shall only occur during the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, and 8:00 a.m. to noon on Saturday. No exterior construction shall occur on Sundays or the following holidays. New Year's Day, Memorial Day, Independence Day, Labor Day, Thanksgiving Day, and Christmas Day. Six, the applicant shall coordinate with Mass DOT to determine what signage or pavement markings will be allowed to delineate the area and deter vehicles from pulling off the road into the gravel area. Seven, police details as appropriate shall be arranged and paid for by the applicant if needed during construction. Eight, an emergency contact phone list with at least two names and numbers on it shall be supplied to the Sturbridge Police Department and Planning Department to be used by dispatchers in case of an off-hour emergency prior to the start of the project. The list must be updated whenever necessary for the duration of the project. Nine, all erosion and sediment controls shall be installed as shown on the plan and inspected prior to the pre-construction meeting noted in condition number 10. Ten, a pre-construction meeting shall be held at least one week prior to the start of work. Present shall be the applicant's contractors and other appropriate designees, town planner, DPW director, police chief, fire chief, building inspector, conservation agent, or their designees. The purpose of the meeting shall be to discuss the construction process, appropriate traffic and safety control measures during construction, stockpiling of materials, and inspection of erosion controls. Eleven, the applicant shall notify the planning department 48 hours prior to start of construction. Twelve, the following dust control measures shall be adhered to throughout the entire construction process. A, spray disturbed areas with water on dry and windy days as needed. B, wash vehicle wheels before leaving the site as needed. C, periodically clean surrounding roadways near the entrance to the site. D, anti-tracking pad shall be installed and maintained throughout the construction process. Thirteen, construction monitor reports shall be provided to the planning department on a monthly basis until completion of the project. Reports shall be provided by the engineer of record and shall detail work completed, issues encountered, and any deviation from approved plans. Fourteen, all excavation and trenching will be in accordance with the State Trenching Regulation 520 CMR 14, excavation and trench safety. The construction area shall be secured using temporary fencing as needed. Fifteen, the stormwater operations and maintenance plan and site records shall be stored on site to ensure employees are familiar with the demands of the plan. Sixteen, maintenance is required for all plantings as proposed. The plantings shall be reviewed annually by the owner slash applicant, and any plant materials requiring replacement shall occur. Seventeen, an as-built must be provided for all site work, including plantings when the work has been completed.
Do you want to add that on the pest control plan or?
Yes, I'd like to, please, thank you.
So an integrated pest management, integrated pest management practices shall be implemented. And document, documentation of such shall be provided to the planning department.
That'd be great, thank you.
Very good, okay. Any other questions or comments from the board? If not, do I have a motion then to grant the site plan with those conditions?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion, all in favor? Close, no one? Very good.
Did you get that because I missed it? Sue, could you sign Kim's plan so she can take it, the A and R, where she goes, save your trip back?
Thank you all very much, good luck with the project.
Great, thank you very much.
Thanks for coming, John. That's all right. Traffic, this time of year, the traffic is... That's all right.
Good points, that was good.
I thought he brought up some good points.
No.
It's challenging for the high residential up against industrial.
Thank you.
John, take care, good seeing you. Happy to meet you.
You're welcome. Thanks. Saved our trip back.
All right. Jean, you want to discuss this, LPA hours on traffic and master?
Yes. So as the board is aware, I'm going on medical leave starting January 9th with an undetermined return date. I'm hoping to be back remotely, maybe by the middle of February, but not entirely certain. So that kind of leaves you and Janay in a little bit of a lurch. So I was trying to figure out what we could do to get some coverage in the office, given that we have no budget for circumstances like these. And so I noticed that we had 16 hours for local planning assistance from CMR PC, which is why it's so important that we all attend these meetings, because we get hours back for that. So I reached out to see what would happen, and at first they said no. And then they changed their mind and they thought they did have some capacity to help us. So we do have, Gabe Trevor is a planner at Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, and he lives in Worcester, so he's not too far away from us. And Janay and I met with them on Friday, and I think it will be a good fit. And he's offered to come out one day a week in the morning to meet with Janay, meet with Charlie to go over anything, meet with the chair of the ZBA if need be, meet with residents for things that Janay can't answer. And, you know, hopefully I'll be able to, after a couple of weeks, at least answer the phone and help out a little bit that way as well. So I feel a lot better that we have somebody to do that. I'm also, you may not have anything for the second January meeting, so my advice would be if everything can be consolidated, maybe just meet once a month, if possible, if not...
Try to do that.
Yeah. If not, you can't, but I think it would, you know, maybe make things a little easier. And then also, the town planner in Sutton and Wilbraham have also offered to be on call, and I would return the favor if ever needed. And I've discussed that with Robin Grimm, and she's on board with that as well. So I think that I've left you in the best hands I can.
Very good, Jean, thank you very much.
I'd rather be working.
Thank you for your consideration, and I really appreciate it.
So I would just, technically, Charlie can authorize the use of these hours, but since it fell on a meeting night, I think it would be nice if he just voted to authorize the use of the LPA hours.
A motion then, so like, make a motion?
So, second.
Any discussion, all in favor? Great, very good, okay, thank you.
All right, thanks. And then, one thing that you will have to deal with when I'm out is the FEMA maps haven't arrived yet. And we have to adopt those maps at the annual town meeting. And if not, we risk being bounced out of the flood insurance program. So I've reached out to FEMA and asked if they could let us know when the maps would be coming. We did put Gabe on notice, I've got all the changes drafted, somebody just has to plug in a date, and I'll try to draft a legal notice before I go as well. So that has to be done, and recommendations have to be to the town administrator by April 15th.
Okay.
And I think John Chevlin left his bag. Could you text him or call him on my cell? January 10th, you'll have the continuation of Blueberry Hill Estates. I believe that our review from the planning department is completed. John and I have reviewed, as have staff. I will be issuing a report for that before I leave. I won't be at that meeting and I'm not planning to have Gabe attend. I will leave it up to the applicant and John Chevlin to let you know if that meeting should be continued. We don't anticipate any major changes based on the Conservation Commission review, but their next meeting is not until January 5th, so I'll be, you know, it'll be too late for me to do anything about it. So I'll issue the report, John will come to the meeting, and, you know, you just play that one by ear, best I can do on that.
Oh, that'd be fine, thank you.
All right, January 24th and February 14th, we have nothing yet, but, you know, potentially anything could come in. And then I just have one other thing that's not on the report is... Oh, good, thanks. Our CMR PC delegate, we have to fill out the paperwork, and currently it's Jeff. Jeff, do you wish to continue in that capacity or?
Sure, I, I feel like I'm not getting invites at all.
Oh, really? Can you make sure when, when we update the paperwork, we'll make sure that your correct email address is on there? Because you should, you should be getting...
I was gone for four months, but I still should have received something.
Right.
I went to a couple of meetings early in the year.
Yeah, yeah.
Great, thank you.
All right, and that's really all.
What is it, what is it again, once a quarter or something?
They have quarterly meetings, and they'll have special meetings that really any board members can attend. Actually, any board members can attend the quarterly meetings as well. But it is once a quarter that we would appreciate you being there, and then anyone else, if you can jump into a meeting?
Yeah, yeah, the quarterly meetings with the delegates, when we get our points, right?
Yeah, and different things too. Certain planner meetings, we get points when I attend those. I've participated in some kind of like brainstorming sessions. I just participated in a regional housing group to try to develop a job description for a new housing planner. So all of those things kind of add up, and I think because we try to be so active, I think is why they really tried to accommodate us as well.
That's great.
So.
I like how you say "us," but really it's Eugene.
No, it's you, because I'm, I won't care, no, I'm only kidding. I won't be here to know what's going on, but it will be killing me not knowing what's going on, no.
It's all your efforts being so active, that's come back to be helpful for us, so.
Oh, yeah.
Well done.
Thanks.
Very, very true, thank you, Jean, thank you. Okay.